I want to call our public work session to order. I want to welcome all the citizens for coming today and participating. Also, I want to thank my colleagues. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes, Mr. Battle, Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker.
Mr. Woodard.
Here.
Mayor Glover.
Here. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And Ms. Chapman, are you ready to proceed with your items, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
You have the floor.
Good afternoon. Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Barnes, members of Portsmouth City Council and Portsmouth family. We will have two presentations tonight. In our first presentation, Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator Stephen Davis will present the City of Portsmouth, Portsmouth Hampton Roads Hazard Mitigation Plan. The city needs City Council to adopt a resolution adopting the hazard mitigation plan to reduce damage and save lives in the event of a natural disaster in our region. Future funding, future federal funding is contingent on having a current and eligible hazard mitigation plan. Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator Davis will then provide an update as it relates to Hurricane Ian.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor Glover. Good evening, everyone. Thank you again, Mayor Glover, Ms. Chapman, for the introduction. The reason for me here this evening is to get this resolution approved by the City Council members so we can go forward and make this, implement this for our entire region. So I'll go through a brief presentation and also give an opportunity for questions at the end. Thank you. The overview of this document is the 2022 Hampton Roads Hazard Mitigation Plan has been approved by FEMA and is awaiting adoption by the 25 localities which we reside in. There's western Tiewater, the peninsula, and also south side which we reside in. There are 25 localities residing in those three categories and participate in this plan. The City of Portsmouth has 18 mitigation items in the plan. And attached to the plan, we have to have these approval from you so it's viable enough so we can apply for these grants. So these grants are attached to the plan. Asking the City Council to approve this plan in the process. Hampton Roads Planning District Committee, which we reside in, I'm a voting member on that committee. The City of Portsmouth contributes to Hampton Roads Planning District Committee and a community base of 25 localities with meetings and planning workshops to help develop the hazard mitigation plan. The hazard mitigation plan follows a four-step process for approval. And they go in this manner. Number one, they organize the resources, get involved. They plan for involvement from these municipalities, coordinate with each other departments and agencies. The second step is to access, they assess the risks that each municipality has or localities. They identify those hazards, they assess the risk. The three, the third part is to develop the plan, the review of mitigation alternatives, set planning goals, draft action plan. The fourth step is to adopt, implement, and maintain the plan. Hampton Roads Hazard Mitigation Plan is a regional plan developed by the Hampton Roads Planning District. And the acronym is the HRPDC. It's a five-year timeframe, timeframe under the Hampton Roads Hazard Mitigation Plan. Revision needs to be adopted for 2022. The last time the plan was approved was City Council, was in 2017. There are 25 localities again within the plan with Newport News, Portsmouth, and Gloucester County awaiting approval. This is just a map rendition of these areas, the participating jurisdictions and the hazard mitigation plans, identifies the cities, the counties, and also the towns. Mitigation planning, adopting the plan allows the City of Portsmouth to apply and receive funding for various hazard mitigation grants through FEMA. Your BRIC, that is your building resiliency, infrastructure through the communities, that's what the acronym stands for, and your hazard mitigation, your grant program, which we also affiliated with, that's attached to this plan. This plan allows for the City of Portsmouth to apply for FEMA public assistance after disaster. Without adoption of the 2022 Hampton Roads Hazard Mitigation Plan, the city will not be eligible for the above unless we create our own specific plan. So Portsmouth would have to create its own plan if it's not approved. Requests for public assistance, we have a rendition there of the High Street doing one of the storms that affected that area. Approval of the hazard mitigation plan will allow the city to apply again for public assistance. That's any work or overtime that's attached to a storm, we can apply to get that funding back to the city. FEMA will not process a public assistance request for post-disaster funding if the city does not have approved plan in place. Grant programs under the, again, the hazard mitigation plan for Hampton Roads, a lack of approval of the Hampton Roads mitigation plan could directly impact funding and application acceptance for all FEMA hazard mitigation programs. That includes, again, the BRIC, building resiliency, infrastructure in communities through BRIC, and flood mitigation assistance grants. The City of Portsmouth currently has several projects that are attached to the approval of the plan. And in 2021, FEMA awarded the City of Portsmouth 9.1 million through the flood mitigation grant for Old Town, for the pump station there. And I can allude to any question that you may have with the presentation. Yes, Mr. Battle?
... explanation of what you do in case of, at large, you could, uh...
Yes, sir. As a storm approaches, Mr. Battle, as a storm comes in?
Same as we know is how many, and what, um...
Councilman Battle, you need to speak into your mic, sir.
We have what CAT 1 would do, 2, 3, 4, and 5.
Yes, sir. Well, each storm is going to...
Sir, if I could, we're going to be entertaining questions. We do have an update about the executive brief on Hurricane Ian.
Yes.
Ian, so I would ask that we hold that question until the next presentation comes up because you did say that we're going to get that after that. Or is he going to do that? Okay. Very good.
Yes, sir.
But we're asking questions related to the hazard mitigation plan right now.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Does the hazard mitigation plan have what a CAT 1 would do, CAT 2, CAT 3, CAT 4, 5, and what the citizens of this city should do in case that those elements are coming in our direction?
That's a good question, Mr. Battle. The, the plan does give, but it gives a storm in a kind of one dimension because it's only a document referencing impacts of those storms. Every storm is going to be different. A CAT 5 is maybe a windstorm where it may be affecting infrastructure for communications and electricity.
Does it have what a windstorm would do, what a excessive water situation would do, and/or the combination of the two?
It does, Mr. Battle. It does. Yes, sir. Yes.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, sir, for the presentation.
Yes, Ms. Burke.
In the hazardous mitigation plan process, step 2, when they are assessing the risk, if they find that one locality has more risk than some of the other surrounding areas, will, I mean, I don't know if that will impact anything, price or services, or is it gauged like that?
It does. It has, the impact goes on the risk assessment. So it, it gives how our response and our recovery from an incident. So how vulnerable we are. Every situation is going to be different. As we know, more storms are more relevant, they have a different impact. How we can rid an area of water so we can get traffic in, be it back in their homes, how does it impact businesses? So every jurisdiction, every locality is going to be a little bit different. So over the years, we know in the City of Portsmouth, we may be impacted more by rain and flooding.
Right.
So we're, we're going to be different than maybe Suffolk or maybe Chesapeake. And the plan does allude to that.
Yes, sir. One of the important points I think that you made during your presentation was you're asking that we approve the resolution. And the resolution is important because it then allows us to be able to get the necessary support from FEMA. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Because based on what you said, if you don't approve it, then that doesn't allow you to get the necessary support should that happen. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay.
What you, what you really said is...
Excuse me, Mr. Battle, sir. I would appreciate if you would ask for permission to speak. You didn't ask for the floor. And, sir, you need to raise your hand and ask for the floor.
May I speak, sir?
Yes, sir. You have the floor.
Thank you. Skip. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Battle. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And my next presentation, Ms. Chapman, is going to be for the hurricane. For the, for the approaching storm that we have, Ian should experience some fluctuations in the intensity over the next few days. The current forecast shows potential arrival of the system into our area late Saturday into Sunday. Severely weakened storm when it impacts the region. At this time, tropical storm force winds are forecast for our area. Oh, okay. I didn't see it up there. I'm sorry, ma'am. I apologize. I didn't see it. And again, I'm on the third bullet point, severely weakened storm when it impacts the region. At this time, tropical storm force winds are forecast for our area. Heavy wind, heavy rains can produce localized flooding in our normal flood-prone areas. Areas can receive from 4 to 6 inches of rain over 48 to 72-hour period. Here in this rendition of the, the model that you see, a lot of times you look at the National Weather Service, they give that GF, GFS model, which is your global forecast what many of them utilize, where the storm is now at the, the acronyms of M that you see as going, the, the air cone that the storm is traveling in now. So M is your major. Then the next, what you see is in the middle of Florida, in the Panhandle area there is hurricane, that's what the H stands for. And then it moves into a storm. And then, as you see, it goes into Georgia and South Carolina. It is now downgrading into just a depression. So what it probably is going to go into maybe now a rain-producing and a wind factors as it goes into these regions of the U.S. The next rendition is going to be winds. So what each one of those lines are going into a 12-hour period. So as it travels out of Cuba, which you see Hispaniola, as it goes into that part of the region of the Gulf of Mexico, traveling along Florida into Georgia, we're expecting maybe the potential of arrival storms, the most likely arrival of the tropical storms. So we may be looking at gusts of winds of maybe 45 to 60 miles an hour as they start approaching into the Tiewater area in the lower part of Virginia. Again, we're asking the citizens to create a plan for their families and work together to assemble a disaster kit. And that's anything they need as far as that, if they have to leave the area or family has to get in contact with, we're asking the citizens to create that kit. And I'll leave a bottom of a link that the citizens can go to, to be able to have a good plan going. So know your zones. We have here Zone A, B, C, and D in our area that may be prone to flooding. Go to the City of Portsmouth Emergency Management website, and that link there, the hyperlink is there at the bottom. And some of the things that you will find at that site are prepared as tools for the citizens they can go through. One is an evacuation guide. The other one is just a complete tool that they may need. Any of the phone numbers that may, they may get to, for their families are part of their plan. Department has, we ask, personnel to review the department's hurricane plans. Key personnel are subject to recall or essential, should prepare and create a plan for their families. All personnel should monitor the storm and have a plan. Ensure staff and personnel can be reached in case of the ELC, the Emergency Operations Center, is activated. And Emergency Management, my department, we continue to monitor the storm. As long as it's going to affect our area, we're going to be monitoring it. Emergency Management should have a begin preparing the ELC or the Emergency Operations Center activations so that hurricane continue on its path, and coordinating with the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, VDEM, to ensure we're up to date with accurate information available for the decision-making. And that concludes my presentation.
Mr. Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Are there any things that are applicable to Portsmouth that are not in the plan that you could possibly put in the plan?
There is a possibility, sir. There is a possibility.
Are we going to make sure that's done and make sure that the citizenry are aware?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Battle.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Good presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
At what point would the emergency shelters around town be opened and where can citizens see where their particular shelter would be located?
Yes, sir. Mr. Moody, thank you for the question. We have three shelters that we've identified. I see Norcom, Churchland Primary, and Lakeview as our sheltering point. And we will let the citizens know as soon as we're ready to go as, as the storm approaches and we feel the need for that. So rain impact, flooding areas, and we'll let the citizens know whatever zone they're in, we can start impacting, that area would be impacted.
How will we let them know?
Yes, sir. What we can utilize, iPods is a FEMA system. It's an integrated public system for learning. That's what the acronym stands for. It's a learning system, warning system. And we can let the system, we can generate that. I can work with Ms. Woodson in IT or IT or just their communications marketing agency here for the city so we can push that messaging out. We can use the website. It goes through Twitter, social media. It goes through emails. It goes through your phone system. It, it allows all the citizens, special need, functioning needs, to be able to have that message in a unified front so they know where to go just in case they have to evacuate that zone.
Reverse E911?
And again, I, I haven't tested that system. I have not tested the reverse E911 system. But if it's something that we can go out, the citizens can always call that number that we have available, 311, as far as information they can get, that, that whomever's answering that phone, they can provide the information, which shelter to go to. And we'll be alluding with a unified command at that time with the police department so they'll know citizens requesting who, who don't have transportation because they may be impacted by transportation. They may not ride to those sheltering points. So we have to have a unified front for communication and how to get that information out to the citizens.
Thanks, sir.
You're welcome, Mr. Moody.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. We never know how bad it's going to be. You know, we see other cities where we think Florida is going to be the greatest impact. But applaud you and your department and the whole team for bringing us this information because proper precaution and planning always is the best key. So thank you for the information today.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
Sir, thank you again, and we look forward to you and your department and everyone else being prepared for whatever comes our way.
Thank you, ma'am.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Madam, City Manager, you have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Deputy Coordinator Davis. Our next presentation will be by Mr. Philip Page. He is the PRHA Director of Development. Mr. Page will discuss the Lincoln Park development site. This presentation stems from PRHA's request for additional funding of 1.2 million for affordable housing in the Lincoln Park development. If council decides to honor the request, the funding has been identified through our funding, staff will need for council's approval to proceed with this request if they so desire.
Thank you very much, City Manager Chapman, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Barnes, and City Council. Thank you very much for the opportunity to talk about Lincoln Park and now Lexington Place. We've been having the dialogue with council since 2016 when we first started developing the plans. At that time, the city committed 1.5 million to the Lexington project. You'll see that in 2016, 2017, 300,000, a little over 300,000 of that was allocated to the Lexington Place project. So we're here asking for the other 1.2 million that's necessary to complete the project. We're, as you know, about a month ago, you approved 106 units, senior units that we're going to put there. And with housing costs, construction costs going up, we want to bring you up to speed that that 1.2 million is going to be vital to the success of the program. So thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Philip Page, who's our Director of Development, who's going to walk you through what we're doing out there and the funding needed to make Lexington Place successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, council. I just have a brief presentation. After that, look forward to answering any questions that you might have. For those of you in the public who may not be aware, we're talking about the Lincoln Park redevelopment, which is over two phases. A little bit of history on Lincoln Park. It was previously built in 1960 as public housing. There were 178 family units out there on about 12 acres or so. We demolished the property in 2019 and 2020. This was a partnership going back to 2016 with the City of Portsmouth, of course, City Council, and the Redevelopment and Housing Authority. Phase 1 of the redevelopment brought 72 townhome units. That's Lexington Place, which exists now. That's one, two, and three-bedroom townhome units in, as the first phase there. Those 72 townhome units were put in place and fully occupied as of April of 2021. I just wanted to show the funding structure for Phase 1. We're not asking for funds for Phase 1. That is complete. I just wanted to show just that bottom line, the City of Portsmouth's contribution of $338,000, which of course, we appreciate that as an investment into affordable housing. But that is the, the full numbers for Phase 1, which is completed as of April of 2021. Phase 2, which is the last, second and final phase, is envisioned as senior housing, 105 units of senior housing on the remainder of that site. That is a slight change from what was originally envisioned back in 2016. The change really is the focus on senior developments. If you're aware of PRHA's housing stock, we only have one senior development, which is Phoebe Square. That's 122 units. And the interesting thing, of course, about that is that the waiting list for that property has about 76 names on it. And so, you know, we almost have as many people on the waiting list, seniors on the waiting list, as we have units, which of course, will be a, a, a long period of time before we're able to house them if we don't build more senior units. And similar numbers exist throughout other properties and throughout the City of Portsmouth. The funding structure for this Phase 2, which is what we are asking for funding support for, again, be glad to answer any questions, but I just wanted to show you a snapshot of where the other funding is coming from. It's a $30 million project for these 105 units. The largest percentage is coming from low-income housing tax credits. I won't bore you by going into detail on that, but that's really a one-time lump sum investment of tax credits that helps us build the, the development. Doesn't help us run it. We don't get additional money in, in subsequent years, but it does cover a significant portion of the upfront investment just to develop. There's a significant amount of funding, pretty much all of the affordable housing funding that we have, meaning PRHA, is going into the property in a couple different forms, and that totals a little over $4 million. And then there's other funding sources. The Department of Housing and Community Development, we requested funds, applied for a grant there, and we were successful. And the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, we also applied for funds there to support the project, and we're successful there. So we're respectfully requesting from the City of Portsmouth 1.2 million, which would help us close the gap and allow that development to happen. A couple other notes, I think I've already hit. One was that the tax credits are, of course, a one-time funding source. We don't have the ability to go back and get that in subsequent years. It's just going to help us with this one-time initial investment for development. The other item that I just wanted to point out was, I was recently at a Civic League meeting, actually in Churchland, and one of the questions that came up was, you know, whether PRHA pays taxes. And I, I think we, we know that PRHA does. There are properties that PRHA owns that are tax-exempt for different purposes, but the housing that PRHA owns and manages, it does pay either real estate tax or pilot. And so I just wanted to be clear that there will be taxes that will be generated off of this development, as with other housing developments that we have. And the, the number that our, our finance department gave me, I just wanted to be able to show what that was. For real estate taxes alone was $340,000 just in 2021. Next steps, if you choose to continue the support of this development, you already, City Council already has supported the use permit just back in July of 2022. We thank you for that. In October is when we expect to submit our formal application for tax credits. We expect to secure all of the funding. That's all of the grant funding, everything that we need for this project in May of 2023. And we hope that in the summer, later in the summer of 2023, that we're able to start construction. Again, we appreciate the past support from the City of Portsmouth and look forward to future support for this Phase 2. Be glad to answer any questions if there are any.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, Mr. Page. As we know, PRHA is a revenue-generating entity. So my question is, why are you coming before council for 1.2 million dollars?
Yeah, well, our, our mission is to develop affordable housing in any way that we can. So if there's money that we receive, and the overwhelming majority of, of money that we receive comes from tenant rents, whatever might be left off that is going to go to upkeep of the existing properties. And whatever is left off of that, we're going to use to develop, under our leadership, additional housing, which is what we're doing here. The total amount of money that PRHA had available or has available, it's a little over $4 million that's being invested into this development. So again, with $12 million for the tax credits, a little over $4 million that PRHA is investing, and then several other funding sources, there's still about a $2 million gap, and we're asking the City of Portsmouth to provide the 1.2 million.
Right. I'm not, I don't understand why you're asking for 1.2, particularly, we haven't received any, or have we received audited financial statements from PRHA?
We get, we have to get audited every year, and so I don't...
That's not what I asked. I asked, have we received it?
Oh, I, I'm sorry. I have no idea. I, I don't know.
Right. So I think, I think it would be appropriate for council to receive audited financial statements from PRHA as you're making a request for these funds. We get financial statements from our school system, and I think that with you all being a separate entity generating revenue, that, that should be something that we should receive as well so that we could make more of an informed decision on the necessity of 1.2 million. Also, there has not been any plan submitted that indicates in this $30 million project minority contract participation. And so that type of documentation should be provided as well, just as we would expect to see from any other developer that's doing work. I mean, that's a substantial amount of money there not to at least advise council on minority participation. And so those two items of information, I know, I think should be received by council before any funds are dispersed from council.
If I could respond to...
Go, go ahead, Mr. Page.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear, throughout the use permit process and anything that we've needed to do for rezoning, we've provided whatever was requested. I have no doubt that we would provide whatever is being requested by council.
Thank you, sir.
My, my issue has not been just what the use permit requires. What I'm saying is that you're coming before council with a $30 million project, you're asking for 1.2 million. The use permit process has not required that because the city has not implemented a program. And so in light of that, that should be something that we should be receiving in this request. I've, I've asked you about that before in your previous presentations about minority contracting. You cited that you all are under federal guidelines and you follow those federal guidelines. Well, a lot of entities are under federal guidelines. The city has to abide by federal law. But yet, the city still has an egregious record on minority participation. And so I would want to see that data as well before any funds are forwarded, financial statements, audited financial statements, and the participation for minority contractors.
Thank you, sir. And I, I do have something I want to say. So first of all, I support this project.
Thank you.
And I support this project because I just read a report that came out of Richmond that said that right now, today, we are 200,000 units behind in housing, affordable housing to take care of our seniors and our most underserved citizens. With that in mind, part of our charge as the local governing body that provides financing and support to PRHA is to, is to look at that particular issue as it relates to our citizens. And I've had numerous calls that come in from seniors requesting, when are we going to get more affordable senior housing in our city? As a result, I know that the state is working on looking at providing some additional assistance as a part of that report. But in the meantime, I think it is good policy, and it is within our policy, to provide this level of assistance. You all have showed that you have done your work in terms of... You all have showed that you have done your work in terms of attracting and obtaining other support from the other agencies, and I think that's admirable. At the end of the day, for me, the citizens of this city, particularly our seniors, who many of them are living on fixed incomes and cannot, some of them afford to even stay in their homes that they're in because of their financial situation. This is the premise of affordable housing. We, as a city, have made verbal statements that we are committed to affordable housing. And so with that being in mind, and with the backlog and all of these seniors that are in need of affordable quality housing, I see this as a great opportunity to move this matter forward, and I certainly would support this effort at this time. PRHA has a good record in terms of what you do to provide affordable housing. You are all very professional in what you do, and you provide the information that we are supporting. And that is why I support this initiative for affordable housing.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, you have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Page and Mr. Lillande, for presenting us this report. As a former liaison to PRHA, I was very active and very vocal in supporting your charge for affordable housing, thus the creation of the Holly Point. And I have had seniors call, beg, plead for senior housing. And given that we only gave $338,000 for Phase One for the Lexington Place, I think it would be admirable, I think it will be honorable. I think the city, as one of our partners, of one of our boards and commissions, which we consider to be our high-profile boards and commissions, we need to partner with you in this. And I think this request comes timely because we do have access to the ARPA funds, and this, of course, is a one-time request. And I know that some of our council members would rather have citizens to receive one-time direct payments of money, but for them to have affordable housing would last them longer than a $100 gift card or a $500 bonus or whatever we would be able to do. So I think that this is a no-brainer, and I do support it, and I hope that our council members will see the same.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we can do both. I support this, and I don't think the request for an audited financial statement is unreasonable. And I'm sure the housing authority would be more than obliged to produce that, Mr. Page?
Yes, sir.
And I think the fact that it generates real estate taxes is a plus. As the mayor said, we have seniors going lacking for housing, and we would be remiss to reject a tax-generating project that does exactly that, provides housing for seniors, helps our tax revenue, and I think it's about doing the right thing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Yes, I just want to make sure that the issue that I'm raising is not confused with an issue of supporting affordable housing. So I heard a lot of rhetoric about supporting affordable housing, it's the right thing to do. I agree with both of those. That's not my issue. My issue is that we should be stewards of our funds, and also, there should be equity. When Mainer Jackson, one of the most noted mayors to have ever served, when he served as mayor of Atlanta, he was not against airports. He was for modernizing transportation. But he was also committed to making sure that that project included minority contractors. He wasn't saying we don't support airports, and just like I'm saying here, I'm not saying I don't support affordable housing. We need it, I know we need it. But at the same time, when you bring in, and not just you, PRHA, but any developers, they're bringing projects of this magnitude into our city, and all we can say is that it's the right thing to do, and we don't hold you all accountable for minority contracting, and we know that these things can also be life-changing for people, when you're talking about employment opportunities, and when you're talking about the fact that persons can obtain jobs and income. And so, I don't want to get this confused with all this misrepresentation of bringing this and couching this as if it's an affordable housing issue. No, this is an equity issue. And I just want to make sure, clear on that, before other council members try to taint what I'm presenting as something different. So I just want to make sure I'm clear on that. What I've asked is not unreasonable. It's a $30 million project, financial statements, and your minority participation.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Whit, oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Yeah, I was just asking a question about the management of this property. Would this be managed by your staff? Would it be additional staff? Because this is an additional 105 units. So, you know, I just want to know the procedures of which you guys will roll out for this particular project.
There is, there's another firm that we would be working with to manage this property. I could go into more detail, but what's important to us or to the housing authority is that there's a certified, you know, properly funded, focused, you know, property management there. PRHA has managed, obviously, other properties and can manage, you know, this property and other properties, but for this specific project, there will be another firm that will be managing the property.
So is there any potential plans in the future to sell this property? You know, because we are looking at where your request is for 1.2 million from the city. So is there any potential plans in the future for that?
No, sir, definitely not any immediate plans to sell the property. When we get tax credits as an exchange for that, you're locked in for 15 years, and in most cases, as would be with this case, there's an extended use period of 25 years. So for tax credit projects, some of them are different, but speaking specifically about this, you're looking at 40 years of committed, it's going to be what, what we develop it to be. So 40 years at a minimum of serving, you know, low-income seniors.
And what's the qualification for people who want to live in this particular complex?
Two specifically, over and above other, just, you know, qualifications for tenants, mainly the age requirement. When I say senior, we mean 62 or better. And then income requirements, so people who are under 80% area median income, which seniors, obviously, are more fixed income rather than higher, you know, ranking incomes, but, but 80% are below the area median income.
Okay. And I do concur with my colleagues. I think the request for an audit statement is something that we are requesting, and, you know, if you can prepare that for us, if it's the pleasure of the council, I think it's something that is appropriate.
Thank you.
That's the question that we ask at this point to make two requests of my colleagues. Since hearing the request for an updated audit report to be shared with council, I think that's one request. Can we all agree to that?
Yes, and Mayor, may I say that those be two years audited financial statements?
Okay.
Not a report.
Okay. Two years audited financial statement provided to us. If that is the pleasure of council, in addition to that, I would say that we move forward with the process. Mr. Page?
I would ask that we could move the process forward. One more question I have, and I will then give you the floor, sir. Is there a timeframe on getting this done in terms of the dollars you're requesting from the city?
Yes, sir, I would just go back to the, kind of, the deadline, the timelines in the presentation, excuse me, as far as the next step. We just don't want to delay the process. The housing is needed now, and we certainly don't want to spend an additional amount of time, you know, waiting for that. So this is our timeline, and this assumes that the city is supportive of the project.
And part of, part of my question for asking that, and I'm sure you can answer this question, based on the financing that you have with this project, I know, having dealt with some issues with things like that, there's no potential for you to lose what you've locked in with your, your credit in terms of your rates and things like that? That doesn't get in the way of, this doesn't get in the way of that?
If we stick with this timeline, then it does. Obviously, you know, construction costs go up, as you alluded to, rates can change. So if we stick with this timeline, then these numbers are valid.
Okay. Thank you.
And Mr. Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. Let me say that I'm not going to be like some of our colleagues and try to dump on them. I'm not going to do that. But let me say, I spoke with your boss, and I have no problems doing anything for my seniors, especially affordable housing. But there's a, an act that most departments do in this day and time, and that's the act of asking for much more than you need. So I spoke with your boss, and I'm going to recommend that we do 600,000, which is above his bottom line. Again, I've been in city government all my life, and I know folk always usually ask for more than they need. So, again, I spoke with him, and I'm going to make a recommendation that we give him $600,000. Also, we'll need to see the records of financial statements. Thank you.
If I may, if I may add, sir, I am a licensed CPA as chairman of the board. I have a responsibility with my license to make sure that financials that are presented to me, I have an ethical obligation to it. For the last six years, we've received unqualified audited statements from our auditors. We have over 14 different properties that we have to do financials for. We have a finance committee that every month reviews the financials in excruciating detail. So I'm very proud, as a CPA licensed here in the state of Virginia, to endorse those financial statements. If I can, since I am a licensed CPA, I'd be more than happy to sit down with any of the council folks or go over any light item that's in those financial, in those audited statements that we've received unqualified support from. These, these, these reports are not, are not taken lightly. They're required from us from HUD, they're required from us from Virginia Housing, they're required from us from every investor that we have, including these investors here, we have to provide those statements. So they are available. They are public knowledge, they're, they're on websites, but we're more than happy to provide hard copy to the staff, to the, to the financial staff here in Tulsa, to city council. So myself, as a CPA, again, if I can sit down, and you've appointed me to the, to this board, to this authority, to look over, our biggest responsibility is oversight of the financials. I think we, not only have we done that, we've done that very, very well, and we're here to continue the good work that you've asked us to do, which provide housing for the people here in the City of Portsmouth.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Again, ma'am, I'm asking for consensus of council that before we move forward on this request, that we receive two years audited financial statements as well as the minority participation plan for this project.
Mr. Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Mister, at no time did I attack your numbers, that no time that I mean to make you feel in any way that I did. But you do numbers, but you have a boss. And your boss, and I spoke, and no matter how many numbers you gave me, he gave me a bottom-line figure that would work. And I went above that when I said 600,000. So don't think that I'm attacking your numbers. Like you, I can do anything with numbers.
Not with financial, not with audited financial statements, sir.
Trust me.
Yes, sir.
It can be done, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Well, I want to thank Mr. Lillande for setting the record straight. I do believe if a public entity, whether it be PRHA, the city, the city council, if we padded numbers, I believe there's probably a law against that. And in fact, I know there is. It's not like buying a haggling over a price of an automobile. So I just wanted to add that, Mayor.
Very good. Mr. Lillande, one thing I would like to share and with the, my colleagues, that I know we mentioned, we had mentioned about your boss. I assume that is, that is in reference is Mr. Ed Bland, who is the executive director. It is my understanding that the board that is appointed by city council is Mr. Bland's boss. Would that be accurate?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. So you haven't been talking to your boss, or my colleague hasn't been talking to your boss, you and your board are the boss. Would that be accurate?
Of the Portsmouth Redeveloped Housing Authority, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
You all have given us that oversight, yes, sir.
I just want to make sure what, what that is, because I just want the citizens to understand that.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, sir...
Mr. Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Let me make this explicitly clear to the citizens. We have nefarious-thinking folk sometime in our city, but at no time am I insinuating anything, but as far as numbers are concerned, it's not that I'm saying he's done anything wrong or doing anything wrong. I've seen times when people told me it would take $100,000 to do a business, and I did the same business with $11,000. That, so I'm not, this is not what I'm doing. I'm saying, he's a board member, the head chief of the department said that he could make it with X amount. 600,000 is above that. Now, that's all I'm saying. He wouldn't know what he could get by with. Now, you can get by, or you can be on 100,000 street. It's several ways to do things. So when he says he could get by, and I'm above that number, I, I'm gonna go there. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, sir.
Again, Mr. Mayor, please, my colleagues on this council, and you, don't think I'm saying that you're doing anything wrong. That's not what I'm saying. Do you understand?
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Page, Mr. Bruce Lillande, yeah, like I said, we know inflation has hit a lot of projects that we had, our homeless shelter, you know, was estimated like 4 million, we had to go to 5 million. I just want to know, do we have the original figures, or is this the, the conclusion of what you guys have totaled up with the possible funding for, for this project, this 1.2 million? Or was that original number?
No, I appreciate that question. No, these are accurate numbers as of the time that we're asking for the funds. We've updated the estimates considerably, checked construction prices, et cetera. This was updated, I believe, August of, August 31st, so it...
Right, so this is a potential that you're saying inflation could increase these numbers?
I think that's always the potential with any development, but I just wanted you to know, we're not still looking at, we've been planning for years, we're certainly not using the old planning numbers for this development. These are our recent updated numbers.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I'm asking that we act on the consent that I've requested of council on the two-year audited financial statements and a minority participation plan before we move forward on acting on the request.
Thank you, sir, for that request reminder. And so we have... Thank you, sir, for that request reminder. And so we have a request on the floor that has been proposed by our colleague. Are we in favor? Those in favor show by the hand of aye. Those who are not, don't show your hand.
Question before that, Mr. Mayor, for this request.
So you have a question before we take the consensus?
I got a question.
Okay. So, sir, you have the floor.
So with this request, what is the potential timeline for us to get that information back from you guys?
Well, the audited statements are available now, and our minority participation numbers are available now. So we'll have them to you by the end of the day tomorrow.
Just to make sure, Mr. Lallande, when you said the minority participation numbers, what numbers are you speaking of?
Well, we, we, as, as you have always asked us in the past, we're very aggressive at any of our contracts to ensure that we have minority participation and in accordance with the minority plan that we have. And we report at almost at every commissioner meeting what our participation is for, for minorities, for, for women, for veterans. So we do all that. So not only will we present you the, the minority plan that we have in place, which is pretty much going to reflect what's, what's been tasked to us from HUD, but also if, if you would like it, we would be more than happy to provide you the minority participation numbers that we have for all the contracts that we have across the board at Portion Redevelopment Housing Authority. This is a very serious thing for us. It's a, our commissioners are very active in asking those questions. We have another one of those responsibilities that we have put on the staff and our procurement folks, is we not only want to challenge the, the quality of the contractors we have, we also want to challenge the diversity of the contracts that we have. So yes, sir, if, if you, we can provide all that to you by the end of the day tomorrow.
Now, the, the minority participation you're speaking of, is that a part of your contracts with your master contractors?
I don't understand, I don't understand the question. Is there a question there, sir?
How is your, is the minority participation language that you're speaking of, is that part of the contracts that you enter into with your master developers?
With, with the contract, contracts that are provided to us, we keep statistics on the diversity of the contracts.
That's not what I, that's not what I asked you.
That's why I don't, I don't understand the question, Dr. Wood.
I'm asking you, the, you said that there is a minority participation.
Sure, sure.
I guess policy.
We look for minority participation.
No, no, that's, let me finish, let me finish. You said there's a minority participation policy or some language?
There's no, there's no policy, sir.
There's no policy. So, so it's not in any contract?
I'm gonna have to get back with you on that. I know, I know our contracts require, require some, some degree, because there are federal contracts, and we have to follow the federal guidelines. But we have, we have numbers on what we have for minority participation.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And question, last question goes to.
Oh, I hit my hand off.
Sir, sir, I apologize if I can't see you with my, with my back turned. So that's why, that's, sir, sir, if, if you could please pause for a moment.
And I just wanted to make you aware.
Please pause for a moment. I'm going to get to you, sir. I promise you. Thank you, sir.
I was making you aware.
Thank you for making me aware, sir. I am now aware. Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
I think the initial request was about the auditing statements, and I think a number of our colleagues agreed to that. So, you know, I would like for us to go forward with the consensus of us talking about the auditing statements.
I think that's already been determined. I think there were four hands that were raised. So I think that, that moves that request forward in terms of them providing that information.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And us reviewing that information.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Wait a minute. Which four, which four, you talking about what we just voted on?
Yes, sir. I saw four hands.
Right.
Perhaps, I didn't see four hands?
No, you did see four. I just want to make sure that it's recorded correctly. The, to our city attorney, the consensus I asked for, in which four hands were raised, was for the two-year audited statements and the minority participation. That's what four hands were raised on.
That is correct, sir.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Battle, sir, you have the floor.
I'd be remiss if I didn't explain this to the public. His numbers are true. There's nothing wrong with his numbers, but this is how simple it is. If the director says, give me a lesser number, Paul, I'll be fine, that only means he's gonna pull funds from another area. But we, in the devilish of all foolishness, go where all politicians go, into the ozone. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Lallande, we have one other of my colleagues who has a question for you and Mr. Page. Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you. The, the question was not going to be towards you. It's about the, the information that we are requesting, I guess, to our city clerk. So is this gonna require that we do a delay on that resolution?
No, ma'am. The ordinance before you does not include the Lexington Place item because city council requested discussion. What can happen is this separate item can come back before the city council for consideration.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
I do have, Mr. Page, just, just for clarification, you mentioned that PRHA is committed to putting 400 million into the project, I mean, not 400 million, 4 million into the project?
In different forms. The, the sheet that I showed you showed, it's actually a little over 4 million dollars.
And when you, when you are showing that, I see from phase one, I see from phase one, you have PRHA loan. So is that part of your commitment? Are you speaking of other type of funding where I see PRHA capital funds?
As I said, there, there's multiple types. It does, it can include or does include a loan. So the capital funds are the annual funds that PRHA receives for its public housing. A portion of that can go into it and is going into this. Any fees that PRHA would otherwise earn can be contributed into the property, which is common that we, you know, won't take a fee or anything. We just invest it into the development so that we're kind of foregoing fees. And so, again, there's multiple sources.
Okay, right. So when I'm looking at your report that you gave us, that when you have funding sources here, that when you tell me that PRHA is committed to 4 million dollars into the project, when I look on your funding source pages, then that 4 million that PRHA has committed to this project appears on line item, PRHA loan, PRHA capital funds for phase one. And then same thing, PRHA loan, PRHA capital funds. Is that what you're speaking of when you're saying this?
Yeah, just draw your attention, and I think we're saying the same thing. The funding sources, and this is just what's listed for phase two, which is, you know, what we're discussing here. That second item, the PRHA loan.
Right.
That 2.6 million dollars. And then the fourth item is a combination of PRHA capital funds, as I mentioned, and the developer contribution. The developer contribution is foregoing, basically developer fees or funds, so.
So, so again, I'm trying to make sure when you, when you say it's a 4 million dollar commitment, and I'm looking on your funding sources, where, where do I see?
It, it's those two lines, the 2.6, 2.6 million and the almost 1.6, but 1.5 million.
Okay.
So combined, that's a little over 4 million.
So the 4 million, was that just for phase two or for the whole project?
That's for phase two.
Just phase two. Okay.
Correct. Yeah, for just this phase.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Lallande, I do have one other question for you and Mr. Page. I don't want to let it run past my head. Originally, you talked about 1.5 million dollars being allocated or something.
Yes, sir. In 2016, Portion Redevelopment Housing Authority came, came before council and asked for support for the, for the Lincoln Park Lexington Place. There was a commitment at that time for 1.5 million for the, for the total project.
Now, hold that. Is that where this original number came from, the total? Is that, was that still accumulative with that same number?
And that's why we're here for, basically, the 1.2 million is the continuing commitment that was made in 2016.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, for your presentation, and we look forward.
I got a question.
Okay. Vice Mayor Barnes.
The, the, the one point, the, the 1.5, that was for, well, it was previously.
In 2016, the, the, the city, the council committed to, again, this project's been on the drawing board since 2014.
So what was the original plan before it went to senior housing? Because I remember you said earlier.
It was for.
Yeah, I'm sorry. There were several iterations, but the original redevelopment plan was actually to tear down the 178 units and at one point bring back 240 units. That was tamped down to bringing back the original 178 units. The difference, and that's where we are right now, the difference in the housing types, which is why we needed the use permit that city council approved in July, was the change from family units to senior units. So that was the other change to the original plan.
Mr. Battle, sir, you have the floor.
How simple things change. Thank you. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
So, Mr. Page, that original plan that you just spoke of, where council committed 1.5 and back in 2016, do you remember the cost of that project, the development cost?
I do not. No, sir.
Was it more than 30 million?
I, I just, I don't know.
You don't remember if it was more than 30 million?
To be clear, I'm looking at what was approved through, you know, board notes and things like that. I personally was not here.
Oh, okay.
When that happened.
Okay.
Because the original plan, as I mentioned in answering Councilman Barnes, Vice Mayor Barnes' question, excuse me, that it was originally going to 240 units, I think that it's very likely that the amount was close to, if not more than the 30 million dollars. But I, I just, I absolutely don't want to give you any bad information.
I just, I just want to make sure when we're talking about what was committed in 2016, was that a commitment to the same type of dollars we're talking about today? And so, you know, you're talking about today a 30 million project, whereas back in 2016, as you said, it was probably more than 30 million. So I just want to make sure we're comparing the same thing.
Once again, thank you, sirs, for your, your presentation. City Manager Chapman, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Lallande and Mr. Page, for your presentation. Mayor, if I may, I would like to provide council with an update on our Rock the Block initiative. During the month of August and September, we focused on the Prentice Park neighborhood. Prentice Park experienced four homicides in June, zero in July, one in August, and none thus far in September. City departments concentrated on their areas of responsibility in an effort to increase services and enhance safety and quality of life in the community. Our next Rock the Block focus area will be Craddock. The community meeting is scheduled for October the 4th at Bon Secure Community Health Hub at 7:00 PM with a voluntary community cleanup on October the 8th from 9:00 to 11:00. We're asking all residents to clean up in the front of their houses. And a community walk is scheduled for October the 17th. A Rock the Block webpage has been established with available city resources, workforce development information, employment opportunities, and other information for our citizens. Community surveys are also available on the Rock the Block webpage. The webpage is rock, capital R O C, theblockportsmouth.com. And lastly, there was a request to see the outstanding public utility balances for all commercial properties within the city. I have a printout if any council member wishes to view it. The balance as of 9/14/22 is 6,724,195.98. Understanding that is a point-in-time balance. That balance includes an outstanding balance of over 6 million dollars, or 6,70,011. That is only outstanding from 0 to 30 days. So it is the midpoint of the cycle. So that fluctuates once bills are paid. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my, our presentations for this evening.
Thank you, ma'am.
Is your hand up, sir?
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Yes. Just a question to our city manager on the commercial 6 million. What did you say that total was?
The total is, as of 9/14/22, a point-in-time total is 6,724,195.98. But 6,70,011.65 is only outstanding from 0 to 30 days.
Okay. All right. And so the difference in there is another 600, 650,000 that's outstanding?
Yes.
Do we have any historical data on that 650,000?
Yes, I, I have it all.
Okay.
Here, if anyone would like.
Can you email that report to us?
No. The report is too long.
Well, the, how about the historical, just the 650?
Yes, I'll send that.
Yeah, okay.
Colleagues, Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
As far as the, you said the Rock the Block started and Craddock, when will that start?
October the 4th is our community meeting.
October the 4th.
October the 4th at 7:00 PM. We'll be meeting with the Civic League at the Bon Secure Community Health Hub.
And one more thing, I just want to give you a shout out for that. It kind of reminds me of when I was in high school and my principal at Norfolk, Mr. Teller, he wanted to move the, the SOL scores up, so he attacked one subject at a time. And I like how you attacking one neighborhood at a time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Manager Chapman, those were the figures for, you said, commercial water bills? We, we don't have anything for residential or?
We can ask for the residential. The request last month was for commercial. Previously, when I reported on it, it was for everyone. So I, I can definitely get everyone.
Okay, yes. Please.
But I can tell you right now, we do have a 45-day moratorium on all residential water and utility bills, so no one will be cut off.
All right. Well, can we get that information for residential water, delinquent water bills, outstanding water bills?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Just for the city manager, when, when does the moratorium expire?
Do you, Mr. Baldwin, do you know what day the moratorium expires?
We did not have a specific date. I'd have to go back and look at the calendar for when we requested the 45 days.
And we had the discussion last week.
Last week. We just started that last week.
Yes. Thank you.
And ma'am, if you could remind us all again, why do we have the additional 45-day moratorium? If you could just remind everyone.
There was a discussion last month that council, or last two weeks ago at council, about us, the outstanding number of commercial water bills, and yet residents were being shut off for minor outstanding balances. So we're trying to come up with a plan to move forward, one on collections for our commercial properties, but also so we're fair and consistent with our residents. So we instituted a 45-day moratorium for us to develop that plan.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just want to commend the city manager and staff for considering that, given the inequity that we saw was there. So I thank you for that.
Thank you, sir.
Seeing no other question and no other items, does that conclude your items, ma'am?
I have the CMRs to go over, sir, but.
Okay. Well, you have the floor, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. CMR 22-286, adoption of an ordinance, accepting a grant of 552,761 for the use of, for the use by the Commonwealth Attorney Services, excuse me, Commonwealth Attorney's Office for Victim Witness Program. Item 22-287, adoption of an ordinance, accepting with appreciation, a bequest in the amount of 176 of $176,000 from the estate of Ms. Madavi K. Chari and appropriating such funds to the Police Department and the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services. I would like to thank the estate of the Chari family for donating that money in their will or leaving the money in her will. 22-288, an adoption of an ordinance approving categories of expenditures for the American Rescue Plan Act funding, i.e., ARPA. 22-289, adoption of an ordinance accepting hazardous materials emergency response team cost recovery funding in the amount of $1,000,153.14 for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services. 22-290, adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $31,607 for use by the Police Department to reduce driving under the influence. 22-291, adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $25,285 for use by the Police Department for traffic safety initiatives. 22-292, adoption of an ordinance accepting planning grant funding in the amount of $41,746 for use by the Department of Social Services. 22-293, adoption of an ordinance accepting funding for, in the amount of $6,900 for Social Services Fund for the Family Partnership Meeting Initiative Program. And 22-294, adoption of a resolution accepting or adopting the 2022 Hampton Roads Hazard Mitigation Plan to reduce damage and save lives in the event of a natural disaster in the region. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. We've now come to the item on our work session, which is liaison reports. Do we have any liaison reports at this time?
We have a couple.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Attended the HPC meeting this past week. Renee Schnatter, who's served on that committee for six years, that was her last meeting. She's been a faithful volunteer. Wish her the best, and hopefully she'll come back when she's recharged to serve on another committee as well. Sean Prince will take over as vice chair of that committee. And this morning, attended the PPIC meeting, and Chris Gullikson-Viegi gave an outstanding report on the performance of our port. In fact, he shared with us that for 18 straight months, the port has had double-digit, month-over-month increases, which most of you know, double-digit anything in today's economy and competition is amazing. They also went over a job creation grants program that will hopefully incentivize more development related to the waterfront and port activity to our city. So both of those were good meetings. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. I also attended my planning commission meeting. We had two potential projects that were up for voting here in Portsmouth that were denied, but maybe they'll come back in the future and be a tax-driven company if they come to council. So also, one residential project as well that was denied, but once again, hopefully it come to council and we can oversee it and we can make some changes. So that's all I have.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you. Attended the Hampton Roads Regional Jail meeting as the chair last week, and there was several points that were taken, given, provided. Some information, I believe, of a closed session nature, and I think we will be in line for council to have a closed session meeting regarding Hampton Roads Regional Jail.
Thank you, ma'am. One of the things I did want to mention is I participated in the city administrators' meeting with the mayors at the regional level last week. City Manager Chapman joined me. We had a great discussion with the mayors and chief administrative officers, city managers, on ways in which we can lobby the state on increasing funds for mental health youth services, one area, another area we talked about. Putting in our regional legislative package is going to our state legislatures and ask for assistance and relief in looking into bringing back or creating a language to bring back retirees of the police force that can help in policing and also with some of the issues that occur at our hospitals. Many of you may not know, but a lot of our police officers, when they have a situation on the street and they have to take folks to receive medical care, a lot of times when it's a mental health issue, that police officer has to remain with that patient until they are afforded necessary services. And that can take one of our police men or women off of the street to do their job. Not that it's not important taking care of those folks in the hospital, but if we could find other ways to do that and still meet that need, I think it's something that we should be considering. So that's just to let you know that at the regional level, we are focused on ensuring that we look at all the ways to provide additional resources to Portsmouth in particular to help us combat crime and provide services to our citizens at a high level. Mr. Battle, you have the floor, sir.
I don't usually or don't often talk, but as usual, I've been looking at how to solve our infrastructure problems, making sure that we take care of our school kids, developing programs for our kids that are troubled youth, making sure that our citizens have after working life, things to do, and working awfully hard on how to bring down these taxes and how to make sure that our folk have comparable salaries to all the surrounding cities. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes all the items for our work session. This meeting is adjourned, and we will reconvene at 7 o'clock for our regular council meeting.